Call this November eighteenth, the Jackson County Commissioned Work Sessions of Order. Have our roll call.
District one, Mr. Guppy, present. District two, Mr. Murphy, present. District three, Mr. Miller, present. And District four, Mr. Leder, present.
I have a form of present. I have our invitation by Mr. Porter and a pledge by Mr. Miller.
Lord, our Father in heaven, we are blessed today to be here. We thank you for our blessings every day and the chance to live in this county and live in this country. God, we know that there are many on this earth that are troubled and having difficult times, those in Philippines and other places in the world, we pray that you'll be with them, comfort them, and guide them, as we know that you can. God, we pray that our leaders in the national government can change the way that they do business, but pray that they can look to you for the guidance that they need and will always be one nation under God. God, we pray in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Put the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, approval of the agenda for the meeting. I'd ask that we make a change. Item number five, we strike the item listed there. We replace that with the item that changes in our meeting dates. We've got a list of those. We'll strike that or make that change during tonight to change the meeting dates. Are there any other chambers of support, please? Do we have a motion to accept the agenda with that change?
So moved.
Motion, we have a second.
Excellent.
Any discussion? Call if it favors, say aye. As opposed, say no. Have no one to sign up to speak this evening? Move on to our list of discussion items. Okay, first item regarding contract agreement with the Atlantic group for updating the mapping, the mapping approval department. You have a copy of that contract agreement? I guess commissioners, Crawford, do you care to kind of tell what it was?
Yes, this is a contract with Atlantic Company that has done our aerial photography for several times over the years. And what it is, is we're needing new ortho photography. And it's been several years since we've had new photography. And this photography is the basis for what we mount with, is how we mount based on that photography. And this is a... It's been what, how many years?
Five.
Five years since we've done it. This is a push from the Department of Ortho to some of you about it and to that we are getting behind on our photography, you know, that they'd like to see us update it. This will update our base mapping. It is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar project of which they allow us to pay over a two-year period. We split it up over two years. And it's kind of like a situation where it's like a max, probably less than twenty percent of this will be county money and then the rest of it would be state and other agencies. So I'm saying, and then they put a twenty-five thousand dollars from the county over two years. And I did put it in our budget, so it is a budgeted item. And this is the time of the year that we need to get these contracts in because they fly in mid-winter, when the leaves are off the trees, so that they can get to us. And like I say, this hundred scale, we're going to do it at a hundred scale, which is very... We've been using two hundred scale. This is a hundred scale, and the clarity is going to be so much better. And it allows us to, for any road work or whatever, just anything that's happened in the last several years, this will get us up to date on that. And also any additions to homes or, you know, polygons of houses and buildings and things that have been added on or new construction, then we're able to pick that up. So it's something that's required somewhere down the line. We put it off for a few years and... But... Don't have any questions?
Like you say, we did budget it this year. I think it was budgeted last year, but we asked to hold off on it and understand that our portion, being a small portion of it, I think we wanted to go forward with it this year.
It's not going to be cheaper.
Any questions or comments on it? Okay. If there's no objection, then we'll place this on the agenda next Monday night for approval.
Thank you so much, Senator.
Okay. Next item regarding a quote from Campbell Remediation Services. This is regarding the asbestos in the annex building. I believe we've presented this at a previous work session. I'd like to see if we can get a decision made next Monday night as to how we want to proceed with this. Are there any other comments or questions in regard to this? This would simply remove the asbestos so that we could then demolish the building or make any change after it's off then.
Did we check with Campbell out if they had us a letter here in command that they would remove all of that?
Right. Yes, they would say, once the project was done, we would have to have something in the contract saying, one, that if they found anything additional that was on the report, they have to remove that, but we could get your... Any other questions or comments? If there's no objection, then we can place this on the agenda for next Monday night. And Mr. Porter, is this a... I guess they would have a standard contract for something. This would be then?
Either they'll have a standard contract or this is the actual proposal. If we sign it, it will be accepted, so if this...
We need to include it.
All right. If this is the only document that they have, then we'll need to make sure that language is included.
Okay. We will put it down and see if we can... We'll place this on the next week. Okay? No other questions on that? All right. Next item's regarding the resolution for the local aquatic weed program. Again, this was presented at a previous work session. It simply notes our support of this process. As I stated before, the state passed a law putting together this authority, and this would be our participation in the authority. Are there any questions or comments? The representative that put this together, it'd be great to, I guess, get more information from them, as I've not been so involved in this process, but need to see if this is something we want to pursue or if we just want to let it sit for the time being.
Now, this is the same of resolution of a bill that Marshall County has or done before?
It's similar to the one. None of them have... I don't think any local laws were actually enacted, but this is similar to what they were looking at passing. Actually, it is the one that has Marshall County in there. We would have to change everything to Jackson County. Have you had time to review this, Mr. Porter?
I have.
Do you have any thoughts or any...
No worries. I think if the commission wants to proceed with it, we draft it to make it applicable to Jackson County, just like it is in Marshall County. Commissioners may have some questions and input on the appointment to the board, how they want that done, if they're satisfied with the way the Marshall County Act reads, and that's fine. If they don't change that, then we can make those changes.
I apologize, I didn't have the chance to look at this. You know, we looked at it once or several months ago, and I had some pictures, and I can't remember exactly where they were, but we had a lot of discussion on it. People put it on the agenda.
Right. And we could even... I don't know if there's a press for this or a hurry for this. This was something we received two or three weeks back. So I don't know if there is a press for this. We could, we need more time to take a look at it, but at least by the next work session, we need to come up with whether the one or two is or not. And even in that timeframe, perhaps, if Mr. Porter kind of makes the changes to this. Any questions or comments on that, pursuing it that way?
I might have to put it off to the next work session.
Okay. Are there any... Anything right at this point that we need to make note of as far as changes in this? Mr. Porter, if you can, make this applicable to Jackson County and make any other motion I think, and then we'll have this at the next work session. That'll be on the second... Next item is regarding local laws. We have a few chapters in here that were discussed in local laws. The first item I'd like to go over is the nonpartisan elections, maybe the last thing in a few items. And Mr. Porter, if you could, instead of playing with this resolution, attempt to the states.
The way it is drafted is to ask the legislative delegation for assistance in drafting a bill, and it is yet to be determined whether it could be a local bill, whether it could be a general bill of local application or constitutional amendment. We are asking them if they will agree to do so, to get some help from the Legislative Reference Service from the Alabama Law Institute to make sure this gets done correctly, but it would make, if it passes, if the delegation chooses to do this and assist us with that, then the end result would be that the places for county election, which would be all the commissioners and chairman of the commission, the school board, school superintendent, probate judge, the sheriff, and revenue commissioner, and the coroner will all be elected without relationship to party, so they wouldn't have to go through the primaries. They would have to qualify, just like an independent candidate would have to qualify. They would have to get the appropriate signatures from another citizen to be on the ballot, and whoever was on the ballot, then they would be on general election ballot by name and not by party reference. There are a number of other changes that have to be made because of the various locations within the voting statutes that require party affiliations, although all those would have to come out and we'd have to modify those. Bottom line is, it asks the legislative delegation to begin to assist in drafting a bill that would be appropriate.
Any questions or comments on that one? Ideas on how we wish to proceed? And of course, take this this week and review it and place it on the agenda next week with the table if we still see issues with it. Any questions at this time? Feel like this would be good to go ahead and put on the agenda for next week? So if there's no objection, we'll place a nonpartisan resolution on the agenda for next week. The next item in the packet for local laws is regarding the solid waste disposal and the park revenue. Mr. Porter, if you can.
This bill, or this resolution, would again ask the legislative delegation to assist in preparing an appropriate local act or a general act of local application as required to allow the county commission to use the excess revenue from both solid waste disposal program, the solid waste department and the county park department for general fund purposes. And it sets that out in the resolution. So if the commission adopts this and if the delegation can get the local acts passed, then the county would be able to use the excess revenue from both those departments for county general fund purposes.
Any questions or comments on this side? Notes on how to proceed? I'd like to, again, take time to review this, but if there's no objection, place this on the agenda for next Monday night. And of course, if we see any issues between now and then, it can be taken off, but if there's no objection, I'd like to place this on the agenda next Monday as well. Okay. So we'll do that. There are two other local laws I want to talk about, but real quickly, you have a third paper in there. In fact, I put this in the local laws. It's regarding our insurance hour or sick leave. We did approve up to two thousand eighty hours of sick leave to be approved. However, we have to change the policy to be sure that we keep the six hundred hour payout that we talked about. So Mr. Porter has drafted a change in the wording for that portion of the policy so that employees that do retire, if they choose to take the payout, they will be entitled to be paid fifty percent of accumulated sick leave at the time of retirement up to, but not to exceed that six hundred hours that we had originally known. So any questions or comments on that? We will need to do this next Monday night if we want to proceed with that. Any questions? Okay. If there's no objection, we'll place that also on the agenda. So the two other local laws that have been discussed, I want to kind of talk on the five-dollar tag fee have been brought up. We need to specify a little bit more about where those are going to be charged to. I know there's been some question of whether that would go to trailers or the board and what so forth. So I'd like to put a committee together to look into that, to study that, and I'll be glad to serve on that. And Mr. Murphy, are you ready to look at that with me? Okay. So we'll take a look at that. What should be included in that process and try to have something, maybe at the first work session in December, as far as an outline on that. The other item is regarding the fifty cent surcharge on the lodging tax. Mr. Porter did draft a resolution on that. There was... I'd researched what counties around us charge, and the actual percentage rate for the taxes is all the same, but I was unable to find the surcharge as of this afternoon, so I want to wait till we see that surcharge that other counties may have before we take any action on this. So that's something I'm still researching. And I believe, did you have some information or something you'd like to share? That'd be the type of...
I'm David Crawford. Most of you know me. Y'all got a tough job. I feel sorry for you. Oh, the lodging tax thing is what I wanted to discuss with you. I do have that information. I have a copy from up there. I'll be glad to give you the facts after long time. I have the most confidence in you that you make the right decisions, you have the right information to work with, and that's why I'm here, to try to give you a little more of the information. Our colleague already says the rest of the story. I'll try to give you the rest of the story. One of the maladies of our society today is everybody refuses to take responsibility for their own actions, and we find that rampant in our society. Our children, grandchildren, they are never fault about anything. It's always somebody else's fault, or somebody else needs to bail them out from what they're doing. And it's sort of the way I see lodging tax. Our shortfall is not our visitors' responsibility. This is our government. We're responsible for our government. We need to fund our government with our money. It's not the people that come in here to visit. It's not their responsibility. It's not their burden. We need... And I realize you're going to have to do some taxes. Me and Matt talked about that thing, and me and Stacy talked about that some. And I realize, and I hope most of you can, realizes that you are going to have to do some more taxes, but I'm just asking you to be fair and even-handed with those. Lodging tax originally was sort of set up to seed corn. Now, I don't know, I mean, if you're a farmer or anything, know about seed corn, but we used to save our best corn, and we'd shell it out and we'd save it for seed corn. It didn't matter how hungry we got or how hungry the animals got, seed corn didn't get eaten. And that's what lodging tax was for. It was to promote tourism. It was... And that's fine. You know, the tourists come in and we collect a little more money off of them to make our tourism more attractive. That's fine. But when we get to expect that they can balance our budget, that's terrible. That's actually penny wise and hound foolish. It's also taxation without representation. You know, our forefathers followed war for independence. One of the things that sparked this thing was taxation without representation, and it was something they felt strongly about. They risked their lives or limbs or property to obtain the freedom for us to be free of taxation without representation. But yet, now we'll turn around and say, well, it's all right for us. You know, we couldn't stand the burden, but we'll put burdens on others that we can't stand ourselves. We're going to tax them because the people coming in here have no voice in our government. They can't vote for you. They can't vote against you. They just got to pay the bill and move on or refuse to come. Does any of you know what the number one tourist attraction in Jackson County is? What would be your vision?
The lake?
Oh, Matt says the lake. He begs. Unclaimed baggage is our number one tourist attraction. Using the rationale on this thing, what kind of person would travel hundreds of miles to come to unclaimed baggage? Somebody on the bargain. If somebody's frugal with their money. These are the kind of people that your fifty cents is going to affect, it's going to offend, it's going to stop them from coming. But we charge this, and the people could come. Well, all of a sudden, unclaimed baggage revenue drops. Well, when their revenue drops, our taxes drop. You know, if they're not doing the business, they can't pay taxes. If they're not doing the business, they can't keep the payroll that they've got. I'm thinking they're probably one of our major employers of Jackson County. And I'm just pointing them out just for example, what this kind of burden this is. This thing could very well fly back in their face, and come back to harm us and drive our business away. You know, we want first money to be a cash cow, and now look at it, where is it? First money is no more. We killed it, and it'll never be revived. I appreciate your good intentions on that thing, but it'll never be revived because we killed it off with our medicine with it. The same thing could happen to our tourism. You know, outside of unclaimed baggage and the fishermen, why would somebody come to Scottsboro? Well, see, that's what our money's been paid for, that the chambers get there. They're trying to show people reasons they ought to come, but when you tack something on there, you're just trying to balance the budget. You're not helping out any. In fact, you're pushing them off. You're saying, well, if you come, you got to pay the piper. Now, campgrounds, I have a campground, pay twelve percent lodging tax. That's five percent state, five percent seed, two percent Jackson County. Not one percent now, like I read, it's two percent. I have the forums, and I have, it's on the printout, I just give my pen. It's on there, we pay two percent. Now, in addition to that, a few years ago, well, in fact, I talked to Rick Roden today. Rick said when Lewis Price was mayor, the chamber needed funding for tourism. And he said, I went to Lewis and I asked him about, let's put on a lodging tax. And Lewis thought that was a great idea. He put three percent on, but guess where it went? All went to Scottsboro Treasury. Now, Scottsboro gives them, I think, sixty-five thousand dollars a year, and they get the one dollar surcharge they add on. But they add on a surcharge, and that's all that I know of that goes to tourism, how that twelve percent. Now, we do pay an extra one percent in this area here. The mountain lakes region and the rest of the state pays four percent state tax, but in the mountain lake region, we pay five. So we're supposed to have another one percent there that's working, far as through the mountain lake regions, but we're paying twelve percent. Now, they threw the dollar surcharge in there, and I rejected it, and they reworked the bill and took me out, and I'm not affected with this. But when you add that into there, it changes your percentage dramatically. A motel that charges eighty dollars a night now pays nine sixty a night for the twelve percent. They pay another dollar, and when you add that other dollar up to calculate the rate, their rate becomes thirteen point three percent, just the other dollar. But not all those, get eighty-dollar rooms. Take a forty-dollar room. I talked to one of the motel owners, and that's what they said they did. I don't have to, and he gets eighty. That's why you might use eighty. But a forty-dollar room now, their tax is four eighty. Add a dollar on, you get five eighty. You do your calculations on that thing, their rate jumps fifteen percent. They pay fifteen for the lodging tax, or eighty. A motel that charges twenty dollars would pay two forty plus the one dollar for a total of three forty for a percentage of seventeen percent. Now, look at your proposal adding fifty cents to that. And fifty cents don't sound like much, but now we're talking percentages and everything. That eighty-dollar room now costs ninety-one dollars and ten cents a night. Their rate is fifteen point seventy-five percent tax. The twenty-dollar room is twenty-three ninety. Lodging tax is nineteen point five percent. Ooh, what about, what other business in the county has to pay nineteen percent tax? You know, give us a break. You know, when... Who has to add any other business in town? Does anybody has to add nineteen point five percent to their prices in order to business? It doesn't happen. You know, according to the chamber estimate, I talked to Rick today, the average rate of Alabama County is eleven percent lodging tax. Well, see, we already stuffed it up and above that. And I know, look, the chart there, Bridgeport has an extra one cent on there, so in Bridgeport, they're already thirteen percent plus the one dollar add-on, and if you do the fifty cents. So what I think will happen is, I think that we'll go backwards on it. I think we'll get more money per person, but we're going to get less people. And so I urge you to give some thought to this thing, and I urge you to do the right thing about it. And like I said, I support you in any thing that is across the board for everybody, but there's no reason to single out anyone industry and penalize them to balance our budget. And I appreciate it. And I'm here for questions. I've got a copy of all this for all of you. I want you to know, I had a letter typed up to go to Ed. I'd already mailed it because I was sort of upset because you were talking about this. But then I thought about it, but I'm not doing you quite fair. I haven't brought this to your attention. I haven't said anything to any of you, so I pulled my letter. The letter's never been published. Will it ever be published if we don't have to? So I brought it to you, and we'll do this in your lap, and hope we're good resolution.
David, I do have one question. Where in Jackson County can you get a room for forty or twenty dollars a night?
I just use those figures, I have ones up here for forty dollars. The other thing that I didn't bring up, you know, all of our forefathers come to this country as Indians. And all of us, all of us by nationality and suffer some persecution, not of the other. The Indians typically own the motels when they're on. I've had a good bit of dealings with the Indians. They're good people. They're honest people. They're peaceful people. They're good-natured people, and... But, you know, they come over here, embody their country, try to live American dream, and they don't know, I'm sure like I know, that we haven't been able to come to you with these things. And I guess they'll just suck it up and pay them if you put it on, but still not right. You're hindering their progress, and they're good people. They come in here to contribute to society, and you see, you see a lot of good out of it if you do know them. And I just think it's discriminatory toward them, so.
Thank you, sir. I would like to say, you know, thank you for coming to the commission and kind of sharing your thoughts on it, and even, I think we talked last week sometime, but we do want to hear what citizens have to say about this thing, share our point of view, make sure we hear the citizens' point of view so that we can end up making whatever the best decision is, so we appreciate you.
I have a copy. See, you're good man.
Any other questions or comments on the lodging tax item? Okay. As I said, I'd like to see what surcharge is going to place with any other counties around us, and then of course, we can bring it back to work session and discuss, and we'll see if this is something we want to do. So we'll continue to discuss and look at these different items. Okay. Next item regarding the changes in the meeting dates and times. You all have a copy of your papers, some of the changes through January that I'd like to see if we could make. December second, I'd like to ask that we move the meeting to three P.M. On December tenth, move that. It would have been on the ninth. I think we've already changed that meeting date to the tenth at five P.M. We'll have a public hearing at that time. December twenty-third would be our regular meeting, however, the courthouse would be closed, so I'd like to ask that that move be moved to the thirtieth. On January thirteenth, I'd like to ask that we move that meeting... to the 30th. On January 13th, I'd like to ask that we move that meeting time to 3:00 o'clock. And then on January 21st, move that from the 20th due to the holiday on that day. And of course, I think we did amend our rules of procedure. We made that vote to amend our rules of procedure. So issues like the 21st, that'll automatically change in the future. That one doesn't necessarily be voted on, but I do want to get this scheduled for the next couple of months. Are there any questions or comments on these?
We're missing a meeting in here from the 10th to the 30th. Is there anything more to add?
It'll be at a regular time this. I guess that will be the 16th. Yeah, that one will be on the 16th, and it'll be at a regular time.
I wouldn't mind all of our work sessions going to 3:00 meetings.
All the work sessions?
Yep. Anybody in being supportive of that? Time changing, everything. I wouldn't mind all the meetings going to 3:00.
My biggest concern, we don't have a whole lot of people that come to our meetings, but would be, may not be able to make it if they chose to come by doing that. But that's not...
I think there's issues too.
That's one thing to think. If you'll study this, we can, I'd like to do at least this as a minimum if we want to do that as far as changing our rules of procedure to move all our meetings to 3. We'll entertain that when we do this next week. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Like I said, I'll leave it on the agenda for next Monday. Next item regarding labor positions at public works.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is something, I think, Commissioner Bimmel and Commissioner Levell and myself, we talked about some time back, and I think maybe I've taught it to y'all in business about it a few times. It's also something we did at Solid Waste. Took three years ago. It worked out real well. At public works right now, we currently have four laborers employed. And we've got, I don't know, with times changing, we've got to the point that we need people that we have, we need them to be skilled workers and have CDL licenses and stuff like that. I feel like it would be of more benefit to public works department if we could get more work done with that. And of course, the fourth we have now, this would fit them in no way unless they chose for it to. What I would like to ask the commission to consider is that we adopt a policy, just like we did at the Solid Waste, that when one of our current laborers was able to obtain their CDL license, that we automatically bump them up to the next level, which would be an HNT1. And that would give them about a 5% raise. And that would amount to about $1,750 a year per employee. The reason I'm coming now with the CDL license thing is going to take a while to get it done. But if they know they've got the incentive there to do it, then I feel like that they will proceed with it. I had a couple that looked into it a little bit. One actually went and went to training class on it, but they kind of let it go over the wayside. So I felt like if I could go ahead and get the commission to agree to this and say that, you know, if you do get your CDL license, well, then you're automatically bumped to HNT1. And we'd get at least a minimum of 5% rates. One thing I'd also like to do, and I think we talked about this, maybe Commissioner Levell and myself, we, you know, I said, the laborers are certain now. If they choose not to, you know, do this, then that's fine. We'll keep them as laborers. But I think in the future, any future new hires that we have, we need to set a minimum that we need to at least have a CDL license. And basically eliminate any new hires from being laborers. We need to already have a CDL license, where we can automatically classify them as a HNT1.
We would require them to have a CDL license before they come to work?
Yes. I think our policy is actually written where they have six months to give. But sometimes that's, you know, that would be something I think the commission would might want to discuss amongst yourselves, which way you want to do that.
They've got that period, six months, probationary period anyway. So if we left that, it would still work.
Right, yeah. I think we could tie that into probationary period, you know, some way to make that work. But in no way, you know, we want to say we're going to get rid of any of that public workers that are not doing that. We just want to give them some incentive. Because, man, we need to truck down the bad. And that's just the way it is. And we need them to have CDL license. So maybe this will provide us incentive to get them to go follow that and get their CDL license.
We have four laborer positions. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. We currently have four laborer...
What you're saying is if or when one or two of those moved up, we would get rid of the laborer position and move it to HNT1.
As soon as, what I would ask is as soon as one of them or two of them got, individually, as soon as one of them got their CDL license, it's an automatic thing. I send a letter up to personnel, and we move them up to HNT1. Then we'll be having three laborer positions. One more would be two.
Could we go ahead and reclassify all four of those laborer positions with the exemption that those in there can remain laborers until they either move up or leave the department? If they just change organizational chart to make those laborer positions an HNT1 with except H1, but they don't meet their driving...
You know, as I said, I know our budget. I know Mr. Trott, you saw this. Our budget, you know, our labor money line out is real close. You know, we're probably, hopefully these guys will get it within, you know, maybe two or three months. It's probably a two or three month period. We're looking at a half a year this time before we have to go through another budget. But we've had some salary reimbursements of some work we've done and everything. With more than cover that, so I feel like we could, kind of like we did the other day, if we have to amend our budget a few dollars to fix that, it could come out of those funds.
Any other questions or comments? Could you give us an organizational chart with those changes on the...
Just the flow chart.
Yeah, if you would. If there's no objection, maybe we can put this at one more work session and have them take a look at that flow chart at that time, and then we'll move them there.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay. So we'll place this on the agenda for a second. Okay. Any other questions or comments on that? All right. The final item is on the bid for the phone bid that's been going on for quite some time. We had to redid this and see the two prices on there. Before we put anything out on that, though, I'd like to, I think we've got a meeting Wednesday with someone to kind of go over the technical specifications and make sure the lower bid did meet all the requirements and kind of tell us what kind of products we've got there and make sure that is what we're wanting. So hopefully, if the bid meeting, we'll have a recommendation next Monday night on that. If you have any questions between now and then, please feel free to ask. And any comments or questions on it at this point in time? If we do move forward with this, I'd like to see that we start implementation in January. And of course, looking for the savings is the big part. So that's another part to consider. What we did on that is they make sure that the savings are there. That's discussed. And it came in substantially over what I'd originally thought. So I think we'll see those savings. Any other questions or comments? Okay. So if there's no objection, we'll place that on the agenda for next Monday as well. Okay, that concludes the items on our agenda. Move on to our reports. Mr. Manning? Mr. Whitehead?
I have one thing. Like this is the first Thanksgiving y'all have been around or close to it anyway. Our Solid Waste pickup for the week of Thanksgiving, we're always, we're going to get this in the paper. I think we've even sent y'all. We always, our pickup stays the same. Nothing changes. We pick up Monday through Thursday, and then our employees will be only out on Friday. And then they'll get paid extra eight hours for Thursday. I just want to make y'all aware of that. So if you're wondering about our pictures.
Thanks, sir. The chair? Mr. Barnes?
I do have something to tell you about this sewer project. I think everybody's got the copy of the bid that we opened last Monday, Tuesday. And I don't know if you've had time to look at them or not, but I think it's something we might need to add next week. Meaning to vote on the bid, need to accept. We need to either negotiate or we need to either rebid it.
If we were to negotiate on that, does that have to be voted on in the bid? Or you'd be asked if the bid is accepted before?
Have to.
Okay. So we could do that after the bid was accepted if we vote next week. And the reason it wasn't on the agenda tonight was we didn't have an official recommendation for the committee that we'll have next week. But after, I think, finding out the information that we found out today, there is a recommendation, but we'll have that next Monday night. But you have the information in here that kind of guides along that recommendation. There weren't rebidders, however concerned on two of those bids. So if you'd like to look at that.
If we're going to rebid it, you know, I'd like to at least get started by the 1st of January, middle of January, because that's going to push it up to, you know, getting back into camping season. And, you know, if we're going to rebid it, then, you know, that would need to, you know, go ahead and make a decision to do it, or whatever that thing. But that's my recommendation.
Any other questions or comments on it?
All this bid is addition of nine camps bases.
Those eight more we're going to put in?
Eight, yes.
Yes, sir, they are. This is a total of close to 60, 58 sites. It's out of the back house. And I'm going to go ahead and run it up to the pavilion, which needs a restroom because there's no restroom at that pavilion. And I think it's right around 58 spots, 60 spots.
Any other questions or comments?
And they will have to dig around all electrical, water. It's all pretty hard to handle. Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, Mr. Miller. Mr. Denver? That concludes the items on our agenda. You do have a copy of minutes from last meeting. If you do do those for next Monday night. And if that is everything, we're saying the motion to adjourn. Motion, if you think. All of you in favor, say aye. And then we'll vote a single.